Initially, start the meeting. Thank you. Right, sorry, a little rusty on my my online participation, so I just have to navigate a couple of windows to get to our agenda. Oh, I guess it's on the Zoom thing. Okay, so call to order, public comment, any comments that are not on the agenda? Happy to hear them.
No, I'll just note that in the room, we have Marla McQuiston and her husband and son, Tom and Justin. Tim and Justin, and then we also have Jen Townley and Donna Savage, Donna Savage in the meeting room tonight.
Great, thank you, and thanks for joining us. I remember Justin from when my daughter was in, was at WCS, so welcome and I'm happy you're joining us tonight. Okay, so did we have any comment? Aside from the rundown of the room? Participants? Okay. Yeah, yeah, Marla's.
Megan, I was just saying that we are here to comment on the housing assessment.
Yeah, I assumed that. Okay, great, thank you. I was, I'm actually really happy to to hear that and and to welcome you because your views are really important contributions. Okay, so let's review the minutes quickly. I thought they were really good. I think I added one tiny apostrophe and otherwise nothing, which might be a record. So they looked really good and I'll entertain a motion to approve them. Unless anyone has changes.
I would give them had no changes to suggest, and so I'll move, we accept them as I see your little amendment there. That one little change, passion on the left side, a little higher, keep going. Right. Where'd it go?
There's a mark on the left, right down that page.
She scrolled by, but I didn't see if she came back up. But I'll move that we adopt the minutes.
Okay, do I have a second?
So yeah. Long term.
I'm sorry, who seconded? Did we have a second?
I wasn't there. So typically I would abstain, but I don't know if we have a quorum with that, so I can, I can second if needed.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll in favor of approving the minutes as amended.
Bye.
Okay. Are you voting? Okay, thank you, Kate. All right, so those are approved. Go back to our agenda.
Okay, we're I just lost the agenda.
Well, I think we're just going straight into, oh, it's just really gigantic. I think we're just going straight into the housing needs assessment, and I believe that you folks have a presentation for us, so take it away.
Great, Megan, I'd like to just give a brief introduction to this and then turn Melinda and Darren loose. Members of the planning commission, most of you probably recall that after your extensive and very hard and valuable work on the form-based code for TAF corners and all of the land use development standards that were adopted as part of that process, our public process revealed a strong desire to do more to address the need for housing and affordable housing in Williston, and also to consider additional land use tools such as inclusionary zoning as part of that. That means that as a staff, we we put in to have assistance from the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission. Darren Schibler and Taylor Newton are here at the meeting from CCRPC tonight, and they were a critical partner in the production of the needs assessment. And this was really our first major high priority work item coming out of all of that work on the TAF corners form-based code. I hope everybody had a little bit of a chance to review the needs assessment document over the weekend, but we are going to go through it. We've really tried to dedicate almost all of your agenda time tonight to this presentation and discussion of this document. The housing challenges that Williston faces are significant. They are, they are not new, and they have some roots that go back pretty far into Williston's history, certainly at least until back as far as the middle of the 1980s. And I would say, though, that one thing that's really different, and again, harking back to the work on TAF corners, this is probably one of the first times where the zoning in Williston is actually in a place that it could accommodate the amount and type of housing that the housing needs assessment says is needed, depending on which of the metrics you look at. So there's, there's quite a bit of opportunity. As I sort of promised folks when we were working on TAF corners, I think the table is set to consider some policy shifts and programmatic priorities for the town that would help close some of the gaps that have been identified by the needs assessment. I really want to thank the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission for their assistance on this project, and also the Vermont Housing Finance Authority Agency, sorry, VHFA, who provided us with the initial draft as part of the contract on this work. We had great assistance there. There's been a lot of folks working on the document we're going to go through tonight. Melinda and Darren have prepared a presentation to talk through the key findings and some of the other elements of the needs assessment, and we can dive into the document and really just go into an open question and answer session. And the last thing I'll say is the header of the document does still include the word draft. We believe that what we brought you is a very, very final product, but we wanted to leave room for the commission to ask for any adjustments to the needs assessment or additions or deletions so that we could incorporate that. The goal would be to get that feedback from the planning commission, incorporate it, and have a document that we can bring to the select board this spring to discuss, you know, understanding both between the planning commission and the select board that this document is likely the root of some future consideration of some policy and programmatic changes in Williston that are going to be somewhat significant in scale in order to be effective, and that are going to require a little bit of creative thinking and courage as compared to some of the other certain things that the town often has to consider. So we would like to talk through the needs assessment with both of these bodies. And as a staff, we want to make sure that the planning commission select board are nodding heads and want us to go to work on the things that are likely to make a difference in the housing needs that are out there in Williston before we go and do that work, because what we're going to bring you back will be a lot to think about when it comes time to hold, you know, public hearings on zoning changes or think about budget priorities, et cetera. So with that, I'll turn it over to Melinda Scott, our Energy and Community Development Planner, and Darren Schibler from CCRPC to start the presentation.
Can I make one comment first, just to add to what Matt said, he, where you said at the beginning that the form-based code process showed that a lot of people in the committee were interested in more affordable housing. I just wanted to ensure that it's on the record that the planning commission had been looking at the fact that we are not getting as much affordable housing as we expected and would like out of the incentives we have in our growth management process. And we decided very intentionally not to try to include it in form-based code because we thought it would muddy the waters and would do better as its own initiative. So it's not that we went into it and then learned that there was a desire. We, in fact, had a desire to work on this, and it was reaffirmed by the public process. Thank you.
Great, thanks. So this report is sort of divided up into two different sections. The first, I'm going to talk about our key findings as far as the housing needs go in Williston. And then the second part, we're going to discuss some recommendations, and Darren will be doing that part of the presentation. Um, so first of all, key finding number one, Williston lacks enough homes to support its workforce. What you're seeing there is a graph of the jobs home, homes index, which is basically the ratio of homes to jobs and is one measure of the supply of workforce housing available in an area. An ideal market would have an index of 1.5. Williston had a jobs to homes index of 2.7 in 2020. This is the highest index of the towns in Chittenden County, indicating that there are 2.7 times more jobs than homes in the town. I'm going to show you a couple of graphs here that show how that jobs, homes, it should be jobs to homes ratio has changed over time, and you can see that from about 1960 to 1980, the ratio was actually below the ideal ratio of 1.5, indicating that there were more, basically too many homes to jobs in Williston. And then about 1984, 85, that ratio starts to increase rapidly and crosses beyond that ideal ratio of 1.5 to a ratio that is, that is higher than desirable. So it continues to climb to about 2,000, where it reaches a ratio of 3.2 jobs to homes. And then it starts to level off and decrease, and today we have two, a ratio of 2.7. And then the bottom graph just shows you in red the actual homes over time. And in blue is the needed homes based on the number of jobs in the community. So between, and let me just back up and kind of tell you the story behind this. Between 1980 and 2000, Williston gained 8,600 home, or 600 jobs from 1,124 to 9,724 jobs, about a sevenfold increase in the number of jobs in Williston without a corresponding increase in homes. And this is resulted.
Just those of you sitting in the back, if you'd like to come up here to see that, or you're welcome to.
Melinda, if I can just jump in while there's shuffling in the room. The I, one of the comments I had was that there were many spots in the report where it was homes to jobs instead of jobs to homes. So you may want to do a universal search and change because it's, it's mentioned so many times, including in little tiny, you know, the little things underneath the graphs saying what it is in the legend. So just a flag on that.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Megan. Definitely something to keep in mind. Okay, moving on. So what we found is 3,000 and 3,449 homes would be needed to reach a healthy jobs to homes balance, and that's without adding any more jobs. So this is from a 2001 report by the University of Vermont Department of Economics called Spatial Mismatch: The Location of Low-Wage Jobs and Affordable Housing in Chittenden County. So basically, this report is, you know, talking about that imbalance of, of jobs to homes and talking about that in Chittenden County, and especially in Williston, there was this pretty significant growth, wrote, of jobs between 1990 and 2000. But the overall picture of robust job growth masks certain underlying problems. That job growth, growth was uneven with, you know, cities like Burlington and South Burlington losing jobs or barely maintaining jobs. And, and towns like Williston with this massive growth of jobs between 1990 and 2000, Williston gained employment grew by 112%. And this was coupled with only modest wage growth. And wages in Williston grew at a below-average rate and was stagnant in some, in Essex. So so basically, this massive growth of jobs without a corresponding growth of homes resulted in severe housing shortages, particularly affordable housing. And then the report points out the need that was identified back then for an additional 7,400 additional homes to sort of get a more healthy balance between homes and jobs. And then finally, the affordable housing stock was concentrated in Burlington and Winuski rather than emerging in the towns which were generating the most low-wage jobs, Williston being one of them. And thus, many of the new job holders in suburban establishments could not afford to live in the towns where they worked. So this was an issue that was identified over 20 years ago, and it still exists today. So key finding number two, Williston, housing in Williston is becoming less affordable with home sale prices and rents increasing faster than incomes. So between 2012 and 2022, home prices increased an average, annual average of 5%. Prices, home prices increased at an even faster rate from 2017 to 2022, which rents exhibiting a similar pattern. Median household income and average wage in Williston increased only at a rate of 2% and 3% annually, not keeping up with housing costs. So housing is considered to be affordable. It's the monthly cost of the housing, including utilities, insurance, taxes, and homeowners association fees does not exceed 30% of the household's monthly income. When a household spends more than this, they're, they're considered to be housing cost burdened. So this graph shows you house, housing cost burden for renters and for owners. In Williston, 69% of renter households are cost burdened. 21% homeowner households are cost burdened. An estimated 751 to 2051, Williston households live in housing that is not likely to be sustainable for them in the long run because it costs more than 30% of their income.
But could I just add for anybody looking at this who can't read the labels on the bar graphs that in each group of three, the left one is for all households, the center one is for renters, and the right one is for owners. And the blue is good.
Yeah, so the orange and the red indicates housing cost burden with the red being severely cost burdened. Thanks, Javen. So key finding number three, most people who work in Williston can't afford to live in Williston. So the average wage of jobs in Williston is 60,400, 480. 75% of the jobs in Williston are in the service-producing category, which includes retail, food services, hospitality, professional services, et cetera. And the average annual wage of these jobs is 56,000. Within that share, the largest subcategory is retail with 1,866 jobs and an average wage of 37,000, 38,000. So this, these two graphs are showing you those wages in Williston versus median gross rents, which is the top graph in that blue line. And the bottom graph is showing you median home prices and where that blue line is in comparison to average wages of all jobs and certain sectors. So you can see that one person working a retail job or service-producing job cannot afford, is unlikely to afford median gross rent in Williston. And even, it could be even tough with two people working the average wage in Williston. Two people, one person or two people working various jobs in Williston with the average wages fall short of being able to afford to buy a home at the median home price of 429,750. So the gap, one gap we identified was the ratio of subsidized affordable apartments to a number of jobs, and this graph is just showing you that ratio for various towns in Chittenden County. And as you can see there, Williston has by far the highest ratio of jobs to subsidized affordable apartments. The blue graph shows you apartments with no age or disability restrictions, and the the orange bar is all apartments. So in Williston, there's a high ratio of apartments that are restricted to people who are older than age 55 or who have disabilities, which means that about 114 subsidized affordable homes are available to working-age, non-disabled renters in town. And as of the end of October 2022, there weren't any vacancies reported among those apartments. So as the third-largest employer in Chittenden County, Williston jobs outnumber its subsidized affordable apartments by something like 49 to 1, and when you are looking at apartments with no age or disability restrictions, the ratio is more like 208 to 1. Key finding number four, there's a mismatch between the distribution of household sizes and configuration of available homes in Williston. So Williston has many more three, three to four-bedroom homes where the greatest need is for smaller dwellings based on an average household size. Nearly 61% of Williston households have only one or two people. 66% of Williston homes have three or more bedrooms, while 34% of Williston homes have one or two bedrooms. So the combination of a surplus of larger houses and an abundance of smaller households represents a mismatch between supply and demand that exacerbates housing affordability. So to address the mismatch between household size and types of housing, Williston needs to increase the supply of one- and two-bedroom units. The town has been making progress on this. Prior to 1990, only 17% of homes built were multifamily dwellings. During the 1990s and early 2000s, that proportion of homes that were multifamily increased to 25%, but it really wasn't until post-2010 that multifamily dwelling construction really took off, making up 75% of all dwellings built from 2010 to 2020. Increasing the proportion of smaller dwelling units will not only better meet the needs of smaller households, but will also help to increase affordability. Key finding number five, proportionally fewer African-American households own their homes than white households. In Chittenden County, 64% of white households own their homes, while 36% rent. In contrast, 17% of black or African-American households own their homes, while 83% rent their homes. Wealth creation in the United States is largely driven by homeownership. Black Americans have historically been denied access to housing, homeownership, and home loans due to government policies such as redlining, urban renewal, and race-based housing covinths. Therefore, black Americans have lacked the opportunity to build wealth and financial equity through these means. Key finding number six, significant needs exist for supportive housing. There's a continued, there's a continued demand for service-enriched housing. The number of households requiring supportive services far outnumber the services available. There is a desire for service-supported housing for adults with developmental disabilities that is sustainable and stable, provides a sense of belonging, and offers opportunities to socialize and participate in the community in a productive, meaningful way. The town should work with partners such as the DD, DDHI Coalition, housing developers, nonprofits, and service agencies to support this need. Key finding number seven, availability is a challenge for housing in Williston. A number of Chittenden County households experiencing homelessness is a direct implication of a gap in the housing supply. In 2022, the annual point-in-time count recorded 668 individuals experiencing homelessness in Chittenden County. This number is likely an undercount. Across Chittenden County as a whole, the rental vacancy rate is at a 12-year low of 0.4%. In comparison, 5% vacancy rate is generally accepted to yield a healthy rental market for both renters and property owners. Key finding number eight, finally, the last one, is that where new housing is built matters a lot. Building homes should not be done without considering location. Chittenden County has a new regional goal to ensure that 90% of new development occurs in plant growth areas. In Williston, this includes the TAF Corners Growth Center and the Designated Village Center. There are benefits to growth plan, to this growth plan, manly and preserving rural and natural landscapes by focusing development in urban and village areas, reducing commuting times when work, school, and amenities are located nearby, reducing individual transportation costs and the cost of water, sewer, and other public services when shared among more customers, reducing carbon emissions, 40%, 48% of emissions in Chittenden County come from transportation. So Williston established its designated growth center 2026, 2006. Since then, a steadily increasing number of dwellings have been built there. From 2017 to 2022, 76% of all dwelling units were built in the growth center. From 2024 to 2028, 67%, 484 out of 718 total dwelling units are projected to be built in the growth center. The recent adoption of TAF Corners Form-Based Code district allows for building forms that require a more efficient use of land and will provide more opportunities for the creation of affordable housing in Williston's growth center. Most, if not all, the need for additional housing can be met within the growth center through new development on vacant or underutilized lots or through redevelopment of existing commercial sites. The current bylaws in Form-Based Code can be enhanced by additional work by programmatic side, by investing in housing supportive infrastructure like streets, storm waters, public parks and green spaces, bike and pedestrian facilities, building better partnerships and developing the town's affordable housing trust fund and policies, and by considering whether the town should move beyond incentives and outright require some portion of new dwellings to be affordable. So lastly, this chart just shows you what the current incentives are for affordable housing in Williston. There is a height bonus available for projects that incorporate a substantial affordable housing component in certain zone districts. There's a density bonus of five dwellings, units per acre for projects that have more than 30, 30% or more affordable in the RCB, and 15 dwelling units per acre density bonus in TAF Corners during this year. You get points in residential growth management scoring for affordable housing. Accessory dwellings are allowed by right on properties with single-family dwellings. The select board can partially or fully waive fees, impact fees for developments meeting certain affordability provisions. There's a 50% reduction in water sewer connection fees for affordable housing. And lastly, affordable housing is one of the criteria of a specific plan meeting the substantial public benefit. So that's, I'm going to turn it over to Darren now, who will take you through some proposed or recommended policy changes to support housing needs.
Thanks, Melinda. And before we jump into, you know, sort of where this goes from here, I want to make sure, you know, there's any questions about the data itself or some of the conclusions that were drawn in the report. You know, both have a chance to discuss that.
Sure, but I did, I did have two things I'd like to put a pin on and maybe come back to. Under number two of the, what they call our observations or key findings, under number two, the graph doesn't quite match the text, and I think the graph could be improved. It has It has categories that don't stress the point that retail jobs don't pay for. It has, you know, has like service and, and manufacturing stuff. It doesn't have retail as a thing in the, you know, saying the, the chart could better match the text.
Right.
That point, I think.
It's service producing, but it doesn't say retail.
Yeah, and, and because service producing included includes like nursing and technical jobs that so that the, the level of pay doesn't look as bad as it is for retail people. The text says that.
It actually does have retail jobs.
On the chart?
Yeah, the three categories are.
Go back to the. I'm sorry, because maybe my point is totally wrong.
There were a couple, there were two different spots. This was this one, yeah. So the one before that just has the bit.
If you go back one to key finding two.
Oh, right.
Right here. See, they don't look as though Williston or Chittenden County. It's just the number of jobs. It's not saying what the pay is. Whereas, whereas the bottom bullet there says the largest subcategory is retail and those average thirty-seven thousand. There's no chart that shows how little money that is. And it just feels to me like that's a really strong point on this slide. It isn't shown in the chart. Maybe it needs a second chart.
Yeah, maybe so.
Yeah. Just a possible to guess. And then on number four, where we have a mismatch, we have more bedrooms in the houses than people need. Just from personal experience, because I had a need for it, we had a home share person live with us and that person paid two hundred dollars a month. They worked at Anaffords and for a small amount of help they gave us in our family, they had, and that was total cost. No utilities or anything. So it was a way to use extra rooms. And I, I think it's an opportunity. It may come more in your discussion, Darren, but I want to make sure we emphasize that we don't just want to build housing, that we may want to fill those bedrooms in appropriate ways with programs.
Yep.
Okay.
That is one of the points I was going to make. So thanks, Chamber. Any other questions, concerns about data itself? It's relatively straightforward, but it's a lot of information and it's a lot of very technical, you know, details that we really tried to pull out the major themes for Williston particularly, which will be given the number of jobs and sort of the economic conditions. So given that, you know, I think going into recommendations, Williston already does quite a bit of the things that I, as a planner and a regional, a regional perspective would recommend that a town that's interested in doing something about housing is, should do. So you know, you're already doing a lot with zoning reform, particularly, you know, in half corners. You're looking at other options. You've already got a housing trust fund. You're already doing these nonprofit partnerships. But so just to, you know, emphasize that these are further recommendations if you want to keep moving in that direction, because there's always more to do. And again, recognize that a lot of this is kind of eating around the edges. There are a lot of major economic factors that towns can't really control that are going to impact housing costs and housing supply. But there are certainly things that towns can do to remove barriers and sort of, not to say grease the skids, but to help this process move as smoothly as possible. So with that, let's jump into recommendation number one. I'm sure you've heard this before. So I think we'll just get it out of the way. Growth management is actually a great tool for the town to regulate how development is done. But when it comes to housing production, it definitely has an impact. And you can see that simply by, you know, the fact that there is high demand and there's a lot of huge development in the growth management system that is ready to go today if it could. So I think that's one thing that could really take a look at, especially in Tap's Corner. Now you've done all that great work, setting up the zoning to get the built environment the way you want it to be. You know, there's, I think the next step would be sort of removing some of those barriers to how quickly that can happen. And the other thing I want to emphasize with growth management, and this happened in Essex too when I worked there. This idea of why you need to control the pace of growth all comes back to the ability to provide municipal services as that growth happens. Ultimately, you know, it's a great way to sort of say pump the brakes. We need to make sure that we're not stripping our resources. But I think since growth management has become part of Williston zoning, you have a lot of other tools that are now addressing that. You have impact fees, you have utility service areas controlling where some of that growth happens. And you have a lot of other sort of design controls on how that housing is built and how it has, you know, amenities already built in in a way. So it might be time to revisit the growth management in general and say, you know, is it meeting the goals of the town in terms of the housing production targets? You know, looking at the Building Homes Together campaign, which was sort of a, already a little out of date in terms of our needs. You know, even meeting that five thousand homes by the next five years portioned out to Williston, I can't remember what the number was, something in the hundreds. You know, we already know that Williston's not going to meet that under current growth management based on what's already queued. So one thing you could do is adjust the targets in growth management a little higher if you want to take sort of the first step. Other things that you could do are exempt and administratively review from growth management, exempt from growth management and administratively review certain types of projects, including adaptive reuse. So that could be, you know, existing homes turning into more units, especially the larger bedroom ones. It could be an office space that is no longer being used because everyone's working from home, turning into housing. Other examples of what you can do and what may not need growth management review are small missing middle projects. So I'm sure some of you have heard of small towns and missing middle housing. This sort of incremental approach to development and growth is a lot less of a shock on services and than, you know, these larger finning crossings or residential subdivisions in rural areas. So allowing those to go forward more easily without as many barriers is definitely a way to not only reach housing targets in general, but really get to those bits of the market, those gaps that have developed over time. Other things that could be exempt, projects with a certain amount of affordable units included in them. So right now, growth management has an exemption for the units within a project that need that affordability requirement. But it doesn't actually help if the entire project can't move forward because then none of those homes actually still get built. So exempting a project that's meeting your housing affordability goals on top of the housing target goals could be a great incentive. And then again, anything within Tap Corners Form-Based Code already has a fair amount of built-in review in terms of your zoning process, your planning process put into that. So don't let that go wild. Looking a little further, growth management, again, consider ways to sort of scale back even further in consideration of these, you know, utility location allocation processes and impact fees. And just pointing out, I love this graphic that shows property value as an extruded sort of visual on the map and sort of how much intensity of, you know, property tax you get back from investing in smart growth. And that's the only reason this is up here is to make that point that the more you can incentivize that compact development, the higher your property values get in those areas and the more revenue that generates to provide the services that are needed. It's not a one for one and there's a lot more to it than that, but that's the general theme. I can go into more detail with that, but I think folks are pretty up to speed on this. And yes, please feel free to ask questions after going through this.
Hey, how are you? Thank you for this. So I just want to make sure that I'm just repeating that correctly. As we build more units in that growth center, that does increase everyone's property value in that growth center is what you're saying.
That's the general idea, yes. The more high-value property, the more service-enriched property, the more, you know, economics, you know, benefits that you get from investing in a, you know, downtown core essentially. The more that property value goes up and that's going to provide, you know, it's the argument that's been made for a long time, investment economic development that helps the town because generally, commercial requires less municipal service than residential, especially rural residential. There are a lot of, there's a great group called Urban Three that does a whole town analysis of your, you know, property taxes, your utilities, your services. And it would be cool to have that done in the month. It hasn't been done yet, but this is sort of what the outcome looks like.
Yeah, and I'll just, one really hyper-local example for commission members to think about. When we looked at the Form-Based Code area, there's a number of sites that are somewhere between a half acre and three quarters of an acre that enjoy, you know, they're undeveloped, that have good access onto an existing public street where you could have a modest, you know, three-story, twenty-five to thirty-unit apartment building whose grand list value would put fifteen thousand dollars a year into the municipal budget every year from the year it's built until, you know, till essentially forever, while generating very, very little new service demand. And that's, you know, the, the sort of the economic productivity, economic resilience argument of those smart growth principles. And hey, as another benefit of that, it helps you close some of the gaps related to housing. So we just spent some time as a staff looking at the map and you, you can just pick these under or undeveloped sites that are ready for that kind of relatively modest infill that require virtually zero extension of municipal infrastructure. You don't have to plow any more road. You don't have to run any more sewer or water pipe. You do end up with more citizens, but it turns out that just citizens themselves are pretty inexpensive to serve. What costs the town money is, is plowing roads and fixing pipes and, and fighting fires, which, which we do a lot less of when it have, it's a modern building with a sprinkler system and when it's easy to get to. So just think about that, that a very normal sort of blink and you'll miss it. Three-story apartment building in Tap Corners could, could mean fifteen thousand dollars a year into the town budget.
It's a gross overall generalization, but the theme is there. The other thing I want to point out in this discussion is that when you think about, you know, adding services to your growth areas, you don't have to get all that money from local property taxes. There are a lot of other funding sources for water, sewer, roads, stormwater, you know, telecommunications, especially now with all of the federal money going out for all of those infrastructure projects. So I would highly recommend looking at CCRPC's Funding Opportunities page as a directory of where to find all that money because you're already doing the things that they sort of are looking for in terms of where to send that. And that again, just helps reduce the amount of burden on citizens from doing any sort of growth. Moving on.
Can I, so sorry, can I just ask one more thing? Because I'm just very curious on your previous slide. What is that incredibly high one down in the southwestern corner?
I believe it's Velco.
Yeah, it's a, it's a Velco transformer on a very, very small parcel. So this is value per acre.
Right, got it.
So in density of value and yeah, it's just, it's a really, really expensive piece of equipment on a really small piece of land.
So again, we've already talked a lot about what we've done with Tap Corners. So these are just extra credit things for zoning reform, although some of them are pretty good and fundamental. Continue to prioritize development going to your growth center. That's step one. You're already doing it. Don't change that. Another thing to consider in your suburban, you know, non-rural residential zones is the form-based code approach. Not saying it needs to be high density or even administrative review, but thinking about how to encourage diversity of housing design and flexibility in the process so that you can achieve, you know, the development goals and the build environment that you're looking for without creating a lot of extra process and a lot of extra time and review, which can hold up housing projects, which adds cost. The biggest cost to any sort of housing development is actually not the, you know, it's, it's land and materials and labor for sure. And in normal economic conditions, those are relatively predictable. The thing that really gets them is the unpredictability of the review process. They have to go to the BRB and not know if the project's going to be approved based on the zoning code or based on, you know, whether the community will find that it meets the character of the area. That's a lot of investment that they put in that then could just fall by the wayside. So again, what you're doing in Tap's Corners, continue doing elsewhere where you can, where there is certainty, that certainty about the design outcomes. So I think we've already mentioned wanting to talk about inclusionary zoning in this project and sort of exploring whether that is right for Williston. I will say upfront, inclusionary zoning is great at achieving housing equity, affordability across the income spectrum. There are some consequences in terms of it may slow growth, it may add cost on the other end of the spectrum. So just keep in mind that it is not a panacea, but it is a really good thing to consider if you are seeing wide gaps in affordability where you're basically seeing everything going above market rate and no one's filling that below-market rate gap. That could be indicative of other imbalances in your housing market or in your, you know, development process. But if there is an intervention needed, that is one way to go. So I'm going to talk a little more about inclusionary zoning later. It's a whole other bucket of ones. Another zoning reform you could think about is increasing flexibility for what I call small A affordable housing, not the statutory limits and, you know, publicly funded projects like Champlain Housing Trust, Evernorth, and Habitat Community too. But the things that you sort of see in your neighborhood that are actually affordable, but no one's, you know, bragging about it. Accessory dwelling units, adaptive reuse, especially in the rural areas. Farm worker housing is really in short supply and finding ways to find, to make that possible on, onsite is really helpful. And then something else I'll throw in, there's a lot of talk about short-term rentals in Vermont and how, you know, that's sort of pushing out long-term rental housing that's affordable. But one thing to consider is that someone who's Airbnb-ing, maybe an outbuilding of their house or Airbnb-ing for a weekend or a weekend time might actually be living there full-time and that short-term rental income actually supports that, their ability to stay in that home. So I think Burlington's recent short-term rental ordinance tries to get at that as much as possible, supporting those who are using it for that purpose as opposed to simply generating a lot of, you know, rental income when they're not even present or living there and it's not helping the local community. So it's nuanced and I'm not sure that short-term rentals are a major trend in Williston, but it seems to be increasing everywhere. So keep an eye on that. I see a question from Megan and from Jill. So Megan first.
Yeah, I just, I was surprised to see you framing short-term rentals that way. I think that if we were, I, I don't think that short-term rentals are, are a productive use of homes in terms of trying to achieve that small A affordability. I think their net balance is probably negative in that respect. The only, the only caveat I would say is maybe if indeed it was an, an owner-occupied property and the owner, you know, lived on site, maybe I could buy that argument, but I think most short-term rentals that I know of, and I do know of several in Williston, the owner is not on site. And so, which is essentially taking a home out of play for a family or, you know, the, the broader market.
Absolutely. And that's the point I was trying to make is that, you know, taking it out of the market is not helpful, but one of the supporting folks who are living here trying to make a living, given their housing cost burden, that could be a solution that they find. So yeah, thanks for clarifying that, Megan.
You implied then owner-occupied, not just owner income, but.
Exactly, yeah. Jill?
Yeah, that was similar to what I was going to say, just in terms of living in towns and cities that have really dealt with that in a really negative way of people buying up properties and then using them for Airbnb, BRBO. It doesn't solve, you know, kind of what we're trying to tackle, which is that we need people living and then more, more extensively in year round. So I feel like if we go down that route, I'd like to see more literature on it and/or a little bit more, I don't know, what our policies would be as a town around some of that. I'd like to see more literature on it and/or a little bit more, um I don't know, what our policies would be as a town around some of that.
Yeah. And to be clear, these are all uh suggestions, recommendations, you know, take them or leave them. Um some of them may not be as important or applicable as others. Um but just trying to think of, you know, what else can Williston do uh to help this housing issue. Um last thing on zoning reform, um on this slide at least. Uh reducing setbacks, it helps increase um the amount of a lot that's available for um, you know, additional housing. Uh whether that's uh expanding an existing house, existing dwelling or living space for possibly creating a new um dwelling either from a subdivided lot or um, I don't know, does Williston allow multiple primary um structures on a lot?
Yeah, we don't distinct discriminate between primary and secondary.
Great. So you're already doing that, that's great. Um. And something I think to look at specifically in the report, um what a recommendation about um allowing more development on existing small lots, um most of which barely are going to be able to have a single, uh you know, in any way, given lot setbacks, stormwater requirements, parking requirements, et cetera. So uh reducing those setbacks can maybe help certain projects happen um that maybe are a little more affordable or can, you know, provide a little more flexibility on design that gets to lower costs, depending on the situation. Uh right, next slide. Uh some bigger, potentially um bigger uh changes. Removing density requirements for certain types of development um could help. Conversion of hotels to affordable housing, uh the idea of there being that the buildings existing, um the, you know, sort of short-term living need of hotels seems to be in less demand lately, but the demand for affordable housing is great and they make great conversions. The impacts on um services are minimal because the building's already there. Uh it's already, you know, people living there in one way or another. Um and again, I think I give you this development on existing lots smaller than two acres, just help make that flexibility. Um and remove the density requirements, picture capture in other ways. Uh lots of more things you can do for ADUs, but again, remember ADUs are a small piece of the bigger housing puzzle. The more flexibility you can buy, the better, uh but it's not going to create a lot of new um units. Uh the last and maybe most important other reform besides growth man is parking. And if you're already looking at this, um but really looking at how much parking is required, particularly for residential um and trying to create some flexibility on how the developer meets the need for parking. Uh understanding that they're not going to um create a project that isn't able to support um itself with the parking that it needs, because that's going to hurt their bottom line. Uh at least the, the person who is running that building uh or that property. Um so trying to allow for a little bit of that, especially in growth areas. Thinking about public parking, whether that's on-street or surface or structured in the long term. There are costs to that and, but as um Taff Corners continues to evolve, that might be something that's worth looking at. Um and then again, reducing the need for parking at all, um thinking about um if folks are able to use public transit or walk or bike, um maybe not needing as much car parking. So more of that can be used for other things, particularly housing.
Jared, what's the image on the sort of diagram, like how is it supposed to be illustrated?
Uh those are accessory dwellings as illustrated in the Enabling Better Places Guide, the state's guide to um uh incremental zoning reform. So meant to go with the second major bullet point. And the image on the right, uh since we're talking about it, is, is from the Shared Parking Analysis uh that was done for the town of Williston several years ago. Uh with RSG and CCRPC. So just remembering that you've already done some good work there and continue working on parking reform. So uh you have something else on your agenda tonight that's going to deal with sewer capacity allocation. So I won't say too much here, but um one thing that can limit housing growth is services, particularly sewer. Uh since we have plenty of water in the state, but not a lot of uh treatment capacity in some cases. Um so because of that, there are options that you can do, use to um overcome this if it becomes an issue. We're talking twenty, thirty years in the future at least. Um reallocating unused capacity, particularly from commercial properties or residential can help you boost your housing. Um and considering the jobs-to-homes ratio, um you might not need to emphasize the commercial as much in your allocation of utilities and services. Um if you're going to look at housing allocation, one thing you might want to consider um is restricting the sewer service area that's out there. So some of that covers some rural residential areas. If there is a dire need to make decisions between where you're going to allow housing and, and how much, that might be something that's worth, you know, looking at if it comes down to it. Hopefully you won't need to mess around with the sewer service area because that's a big um effort and can become very political, but um again, emphasizing that smart growth approach can really also help housing costs in the long term for those who are on sewer versus um subject. Uh looking at purchasing more capacity upgrades, again, if you get to a point where uh you're, you've tried all the other options and you still want more housing growth, but don't have the sewer capacity to support it. Those could be options. And then this is a little bit of a high in the sky idea, but onsite uh shared uh community subject options are becoming more uh possible, both in a term of technology and permitting. So if you're looking at a small rural development, um you might be able to do onsite subject uh share between, you know, a condo association or cottage court, as opposed to having to use a municipal sewer. So again, in a scenario where this becomes limited twenty, thirty years out, starting to plan now will help avoid some of those hard decisions being made further than we wanted. Housing Trust Fund is something that Williston's already done, so I want to give you kudos for that. Uh the one thing that was sort of left out of that process was actually creating a housing trust fund advisory board and appointing staff to carry out um the, the project and carry out, you know, allocating those um uh funds to specific um projects and um we agree with. So that's step one, and that's something more of a select board to consider, but also think about how that Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board might interface with the planning commission and the DRB when it comes to development projects and making sure that those planning goals are aligned with um how this funding can be allocated. Um something we'll talk with the select board about as well as dedicating, establishing a dedicated funding source for the Housing Trust Fund, because uh last year or two, it's been uh not funded by the select board and then overall in the um general budget due to budget constraints. Um it is a cost, but it's something worth investing in. Uh so finding a way to either make that a voter-approved dedicated tax rate, or sort of like the idea of a penny for parks, uh penny for housing. Um it could also come from um a portion of your local options tax, so that the um jobs, you know, base and the economy that is creating some of that need for housing in Williston can be sort of siphoned to support housing growth for the, uh folks who actually work here. Um and then if you do look at inclusionary zoning, one of the options is having a fee in lieu of meeting those um affordability requirements, which then can go into the Housing Trust Fund. Um there's a lot of research that happened on how Burlington did that and you know, again, it's a bit of a trade-off in terms of whether you have that fee and how well it works and how much it actually covers the cost of housing creation. So if you go that, down that route, I can come back and talk about all those details.
And they're, and they're carrying that forward into how they're dealing with their getting houses offered fossil fuel fee for larger buildings that are fossil fuel fee.
Yeah.
Doing the same thing, paying a penalty that goes in to helping other people.
Yeah, uh it's the, something called a fee-bait, which is a term I learned recently. You charge folks who are able to, you know, pay that to, that's support programs for people who aren't able to pay to make the changes that you need. Um one other thing with a housing trust fund, this isn't actually related to the fund itself, but thinking about how the town, how else the town can invest in housing and supporting housing growth, particularly subsidized housing, is thinking about those infrastructure investments that support a development project. So if you've already created a road system, a sewer system, and that can enable more housing growth. Um whether it's affordable or not, but um particularly for affordable housing, you might want to consider not charging. Um you know, impact fees, which I think you might already do, um or, you know, hookup fees. And, and other options to consider in terms of uh funding those investments are tax increment financing or a special assessment district or also something called the Rural Economic Development in uh in the last uh.
Improvement, I believe.
Hey folks. Are creative ways to take the, to capture the value of uh development by investing in the um utilities and the services that support it. And again, I already mentioned state federal grants and loans, they're out there. Um moving on, recommendation number five. Um nonprofit partnerships, Williston already has a really good track record of this, even though there's less affordable housing being produced than with WIC and that is targeted. Uh you do have really good relationships with the folks who are creating that subsidized affordable housing. So continuing to support them as much as you can, because they are the ones that are best positioned to provide the deep affordability that's really hard for the municipality to target, because they can get those um uh public funds, they can get those subsidies, they can get the federal um tax credits, et cetera. Other things that uh either the planning commission or maybe that Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board could actively do to support this is identifying parcels that could be good for a public project to either develop patently or um have a portion of that be managed by one of these nonprofits. And then connecting them um with the landowner to sort of facilitate the project. Um and supporting their grant applications with either a direct letter from any commissioner select board or even better in your town plan language, since you've got a town plan renewal coming up. Now's a good time to think about uh strengthening the importance of affordable housing and particularly in the areas that you want to see it and where it's likely to happen. Um other things we can do, and this, we're really reaching um, yeah, next slide. We're really reaching in some ways here, uh because it's less, you know, uh finish this project and you've done, you've checked the box. These are really more ongoing planning-related um initiatives that are a lot harder to sort of um, you can see the direct outcome, but streamlining the development review process does help on the back end, like I mentioned earlier. Reducing permitting fees, uh which Williston already does some of, but there's another idea, which I'll show on the next slide for how to do that at the uh um state level. Um supporting construction workforce development, that's a major issue right now. Um since the two thousand eight recession, the construction workforce has really tamed, um partly due to the challenges in that industry, partly due to some demographic changes that we've seen in the housing needs assessment. Folks are retiring, getting older, not as many young folks going into those industries. Um so trying to encourage folks to consider a technical and vocational career um as a viable option for them, that's actually fairly lucrative. Um and sort of helping folks see that possibility and support that global economy as much as possible. Again, facilitating local supply chains if possible. A lot of our materials come from outside the state when it comes to building uh houses. Um if there is a way to sort of find um materials locally, there's talk about doing mass timber in New England. It's a little more challenging in our west, but um that we don't have to use steel for larger buildings. Um but basically Vermont's at the end of a long supply chain of these materials, so any change in those markets, you know, we get the, the wood flash of that more than any other place in, in our area. And then going back again to, you know, direct involvement by the town in developing municipal land or acquiring it and dedicating that to housing, whether it's affordable and subsidized or just workforce or market-free housing. If you've got the ability to make those acquisitions um and make those um developments happen, no reason not to. Uh so going back to that uh permitting fees point, one thing that I've uh realized is that Williston has, of course, the Growth Center designation and the Growth Center designation for this part of town, but there's an additional state uh planning designation that you could get that would add a few benefits for housing projects, and that's neighborhood development area. You can do that within the Growth Center boundaries. Um probably in areas specifically that allow housing at this point, but with the new code, that would be pretty much everything in Taff Corners. And the um highlighted areas in green are the sort of moneymakers or money savers for housing development. You've already got a lot of those, the no appeals on um heritage area and the active duty threshold being higher for housing projects, as well as the uh mitigation of ag soils and the active, and um exemption to the land deeds tax. But other things that would uh be eligible, you're eligible for are a reduction in active duty fees total, as well as the um state wastewater fee being half of fifty dollars per allocation. Those can really add up uh for larger projects. So getting that neighborhood development area designation, which is at this point, pretty straightforward, um could help those projects out. But. Um, yeah, what just happened? Uh what?
Okay.
There we go. Um as we saw in the slides about cost burden, um back can be a major factor in, you know, how someone's economic circumstances play out. Uh they're paying more for their housing than they can afford. There might be only so much use of the town or even those residents can do to change that in a limited market. But reducing their other costs of living makes the pinch of that housing cost burden a little less. So reducing transportation expenses, giving people the ability not to have a car and not to need a car. Um I did some estimates, uh the average yearly cost of owning a car in Vermont is about ten thousand dollars. So take that off the top of your housing cost burden and that's a huge, that could bump you back into the unburdened or less burden category. Um it's a challenge in Vermont to not have a car, but maybe to go from two cars to one car, um could help a lot of folks. You're already doing great work on that. Mixed-use development, um growth, um uh smart growth and a supportive public, those initiatives will help support public transit in your area's plan for growth and where your housing is. Um one thing we can also look at for, you know, as you go further out from the Growth Center is microtransit, getting people to the areas where they can then take public transit. I had a whole presentation about that a couple of months ago. And then also energy efficiency, you know, Williston Energy Committee already does great work in trying to uh make people aware of the incentives and rebates that are out there. Other options include an energy revolving loan fund and encouraging folks to use renewable heating sources that can just again help reduce those ongoing costs once that housing is built. Um and reduce the fluctuation in costs as the economy handles it. It's unpredictable changes.
Uh we can get there, I have a question with that, we'll get there.
No, we can do that now, let's go. Well, we have one more slide.
Uh Burlington uh put in a charter change so that they could uh incentivize clean on buildings. They do it to some larger buildings, they're, they're just about ten tonight. And it's one of those things where if you don't do it, that you pay a penalty and that kind of goes helps other people with um that converting to clean heat. Um. I would like to, given our energy plan, and we have so many houses on the docket to be built over the next few years, I would like to find a way to um ensure that those are not put in with furnaces that are good for twenty to thirty years burning fossil fuels, that they are, that it's a supplemental furnace, not a primary heating source. And so I, I'd like us, that's not directly related to affordable housing, um but I would really like us to not give short shrift to renewable heating sources as a priority for us in our work as a planning commission.
Last, certainly not least, um we talked a little bit about, you know, the discrepancies and disparities between um white households and non-white households in terms of their uh housing choice and their economic circumstances. It's, you know, uh, you know, unfortunately a very common issue and um there's all the stuff that we talked about already will help improve equity in housing by increasing affordability, by increasing housing choice. They're going to help create more opportunities for those who haven't had that as much. Um so, you know, really key in that is moving beyond, giving people the ability to move beyond um assistance for housing, so section A or subsidized housing, allowing them to sort of participate equally in the housing market. Um and that's really tough because it depends on things outside of the built environment and outside of the development process, but um emphasizing that that is a goal and help sort of bring the bigger picture and the focus of why you're doing this work. And even if there might be, you know, costs, there might be inconveniences, it's not, you know, because simply you're trying to, you know, uh meet a housing goals, because you're actually trying to create an inclusive community that provides the opportunity for everyone to participate as much as possible in your society. So we talked about inclusionary zoning, I'll um pause on that and we can talk about it more as we um discuss the questions. Um but other things the town can consider doing are uh fair housing education enforcement. But other things the town can consider doing are fair housing education enforcement. It's, there are laws on the books at the state level that are supposed to deal with this, but it still happens and it's hard to detect. But as, you know, staff are in the permitting process or in any sort of inspection process, you can see, you know, get sort of those anecdotal stories and try to dig a little further. And even doing education for renters about what their rights are and what to expect can be helpful for Burlington Cityville Office, have a really, sorry, the permitting inspection office has some great partnerships that are a good example of how to follow that. You could also consider in terms of rental safety and rental quality, doing building codes and inspections at the local level. But there is talk about having a statewide, you know, overhaul in the rental housing inspection system. So I would maybe hold off on that a little bit, but put that in the back of your mind. There's also some statewide discussion about a just cause eviction protection and go into detail of that, but basically protecting renters from anything that's sort of just a, you know, increase in their rent or not having a lease renewed because landlord is able to charge more money, making sure that they still have those housing, the housing assets that they had. And then there are some state and nonprofit programs that do this, but down payment assistance, particularly for black homeowners or people who are looking to become homeowners, can back and help write some of those injustices that have happened in terms of that being excluded from homeownership in the past. And then this is really not what the town's direct control, but trying to ensure equal pay and job opportunities, both, you know, for all types of workers, for all folks who are in the job market, I just sort of highlighting that that is still, there are still some persistent differences there that can affect housing choice. So that's a lot of time for me, I'm curious to hear what everyone else thinks.
I'll add one thing right off the bat, which is I like inclusionary zoning because I don't like the segregation of different types of housing. And it's, if we think about it, about the cities, I don't like the idea of somebody lives in the projects or whatever. I like integrated income levels in our communities. I feel it's enriching for all and it's a, it's a value I hold. So inclusionary zoning achieves that, whereas everything else in there doesn't by itself achieve that.
Absolutely true, it's inclusionary zoning is called back for a reason. It keeps the community inclusive, it keeps that, you know, distribution of incomes even throughout the community more so than the free market has shown itself to do.
And I'll just take the pause to note that you've seen a slideshow tonight. There's obviously a much more lengthy document that lives behind this. We're happy to, you know, bring that up, share it. That document itself is split into about a one-third, two-third front end, back end with a front end summary and a lot more charts and tables in the back end explaining all of the data that went into it and its sources and providing some other ways of comparing Williston to its fellow communities and region.
It's the one that we, that we got ahead of this meeting.
It is, so you've had it.
Yeah.
But that's, you know, the, what we went through as a summary, we can certainly bring up elements of that document tonight to talk about if folks want to go deeper into some of these things. And I've talked long enough that people have hands raised.
Yeah, thanks. Darren, could you, you mentioned that there was some to know about inclusionary zoning and I wondered if you could tell us a little bit, you know, maybe you seem to hint that there, you know, were some negatives that we should be aware of. And, and I just wondered if you could identify those for us.
Absolutely. So inclusionary zoning, just to reiterate, is a zoning process where when a developer comes in, it's required to provide a certain number of units at either affordable rent or affordable sale price. Typically it's around 10% and typically it's somewhere between 80 to 120% of the median income. So when a developer is doing a project, they get financing from either typically from a private bank loan, sometimes through tax credits, but what their goal is to do is to build their project, account for their costs and sell or rent at a level that is going to get them a return on their investment because they're doing this as a business. So in order to do that, they have to sell or rent at market rate. So in order to compensate for provision in inclusionary zoning that says you have to sell some of that below market rate and essentially take a loss on those units, they have to find a way to compensate for that. So one of the challenges with inclusionary zoning is finding a incentive to give them that actually reduces their cost or allows them to recapture some of that loss on the inclusionary units. And that can be reduced fees, that can be density bonus, it can be, you know, streamline the permitting process so that they know what their costs are going to be more predictably, all kinds of options. But one thing that I've heard from developers is that when all else fails, what they have to do is essentially split their development project into a extra, you know, they add cost onto the higher end units. So they're selling some of them for more than they otherwise would and you're kind of increasing the disparity between higher end and low end. So while it's intended to create inclusion and across the income spectrum, what you're essentially doing is cutting out. So that's why for inclusionary zoning, I would recommend not trying to get the deep affordability, the below 80% AMI in your requirements, because that's going to take public subsidy. Have a developer aim for somewhere between 80 and 120% of the median income and make those requirements light enough that it's not going to prevent a developer from moving forward on a project at all. Because if they see extra costs in that project, they're just not going to build anything and you're losing all of those market rate units as well as the inclusionary ones. So done right, inclusionary zoning achieves that, you know, mixed income goal. But without the right, you know, calibration to your zoning in your market, it can sort of have the opposite effect.
Couple of questions.
Yeah. Ellie.
Hi, I just really wanted to express a lot of gratitude to you and your team who put together this report and the presentation. I was getting very fired up reading it and it's just so nice to have numbers behind an issue that so many of us feel really, really acutely. If I may talk about my personal situation, you know, I, I rent an apartment in the Taff Corners area. The rent has been $1,650 a month. It's really high and that's before utilities and I found out today that it's going up another $200 a month. So that, that'll end up being $2,000 a month for a one-bedroom apartment. And I can't downsize because it's already one bedroom and I can't move somewhere else because I've been looking for the last year and there's nowhere else to go. So just thank you so much for the work you've done and the, the options you've presented so that we can, we have some, some tools that we can start working on because this is so important and so many of us really, really feel this.
Thank you, Ellie, it's all right, we don't have, you know, really concrete solutions to that exact situation. But I think most folks, you know, here tonight know somebody or have been in that situation themselves at some point in their life, but certainly recently. Sheila, or was it something else you wanted to add, Ellie, your hands up?
Um, so I guess when we're, sorry, this is probably a very basic question, but for inclusionary zoning, this is all for sale or are we also talking rental? So like, it makes sense to me in sale, like how we could regulate that, that'd be fairly straightforward to, to make sure that that happens. But if it's rental, like what's the period that you have to keep it that way? And how would Emily and Matt?
We made the line to do it.
Yeah. Yeah, so there's a lot of different approaches to doing that. But rental is an option, inclusionary zoning does require a little more monitoring. So typically what you would do is say, you know, developer, you're going to have X percent of this project be these inclusionary units. You might even identify specific, you know, units that are going to stay in that affordability range or it might just be sort of a rotating, you know, part of the either apartment building or that's typically what they would, they would do, it would be either apartments or condos. And they would have to either, you know, show some reporting of, you know, here are the tenants that we're leasing to and they meet these income requirements. Because when we put out the application, we require them to disclose that. And either town staff would be reviewing that to make sure that it meets all the requirements that you laid out in the zoning and the development approval. Another option is to contract that work out to somebody else, which is not really anybody who does that anymore and is willing to take that on. So it would really be something additional in the planning and zoning staff. The other thing you could do, which is, you know, doesn't have the benefit of knowing that your process is working is to just have it be in the deed and, you know, sort of allow the developer to sort of do that and solve and monitor themselves for a larger project, for someone who's, you know, maybe already dealing with some subsidized housing or has that capacity in there, you know, a property management company, that might not be an issue, they might do that just fine. For smaller projects, you know, it's hard to know what that would look like.
Yeah, I'll just add that most of the scale of projects we see in Williston are not big enough to attract outside interest in taking on that responsibility. What we have now in terms of projects where including some of the units have been a condition of approval, we manage it as an element of zoning enforcement. It is complicated, time consuming and frustrating. And it, it, it's something that is that way right now where we're managing maybe fewer than 100 units that have been approved that way and thinking about that becoming a larger component of what the town might do. I think it would be a really significant administrative burden. And, you know, one thing I'd throw out there is the concept of naturally affordable housing types and housing units, which is the idea of using your land development standards to ask that projects include units that are smaller than, than the typical unit in the project or have fewer bedrooms or are otherwise just going to come in at a level that, you know, especially when you're talking about the 100 or 120% median income stuff. A lot of, lot of new build Williston apartments actually come in relatively close to the affordable at 120% median level and they're significant large spacious, generally two-bedroom apartments. So there's also some ways you could think about inclusionary zoning without all the numbers, without all the income qualification. Just build a project that physically is very likely to be naturally affordable in, in the market. And that's, that's a much more free market, much lighter weight approach to this stuff. But it, it does pull some of the administrative complexity off of the town as well as the builder because you're just saying, just, just build this and you'll meet our requirement. So early thoughts on this, but something, something to really think about.
And one last approach would be to make them, like, to make the requirement be affordable for like 20 years or something and then just realize that by 20 years out, it's going to become more naturally affordable just due to its age or whatever. But, yeah, but that, that sort of sets a limit to the administrative burden of it, of, you know, keeping track of all these houses that, you know, they will cycle in and out.
Yeah, and Melinda hit the point that, you know, new housing is going to be a lot more valuable and on the higher end of the market than existing older housing stocks. So again, trying to think about what's already naturally affordable out there in Williston, which right now feels like nothing because of the housing market and the demand that we see. But thinking about, you know, relatively, you know, trying to make new housing meet these affordability requirements is, you know, costs are always going to go up, costs are always going to be fresh. If there is enough of a supply of, you know, older housing stock that can either be renovated or sort of is needing that middle income or even lower part of the market, then maybe you don't need to put as much of a intervention into your system to achieve your goals. Hard to, this is the hard time to say that though. Yeah.
I, I have my hand raised, Megan, but you can't see it, or should I go or do you want to go first?
You go ahead, Shep.
Okay, I just, I feel as though with the low vacancy rate in the county and the high demand for housing that we're going to have to regulate it somehow. We can't just build it to be affordable because the builder can charge more than the affordable rate in the current market situation. Which is unfortunate, but I think that's where we are. I had been hoping that we could have a nonprofit that would be responsible for being the intermediary to know the confidential information on people's income and so forth. And I think we've been very legitimately criticized for having developers submit their own spreadsheet. And we are, you know, it's, it's sort of, sort of a self guarding, there's not enough checks and balances in the current system. And so I'm disappointed to hear you say that there's not many intermediaries that would do that. And I think we need to find a, a way to do that. And one other comment I just wanted to make, which is, most of us, I think in the planning commission, we want to support more affordable housing. I just want to acknowledge there are people in the community who are worried about that and worried about what comes with affordable housing. And I think how we do it, and one of the things I think is when it's integrated with other housing, it, there's less, fewer of those worries come to the surface. But then how do you do that is, is part of the question. So I just wanted to acknowledge that everybody isn't going to say, oh, yay, yay, yay. Even if they don't, are afraid to say that they have concerns, some people do have concerns. And so I think it's very good that we go deliberatively and carefully.
Yeah, and yeah, having that messaging about housing and housing affordability and creating more affordable housing is a challenge that a lot of communities are struggling with. And I think one way to talk about it is again, we're making housing for the people who work here, who are asserting to your copy or selling you your, you know, widget at, you know, Walmart. And, you know, that's, you know, would you not want those folks to have the same opportunities that you have or even somewhat of the opportunity that you've had? And, you know, it's a little bit of a guilt trip, but I think it helps create a sense of, you know, this isn't for folks who are going to be taking advantage of the system or not contributing to society. These are folks who actively want to be part of your community but are not able to participate.
Thank you. Good.
Yeah, so I actually have a very specific recommendation for the report that you sent us on page 10. And I can just describe what this is, but I'm telling the page number so Melinda maybe could find it. But you identified the number of income controlled rental homes for a bunch of different nearby towns and Williston. But I think it would be more helpful to present those as a proportion of the total homes. Because as it is, like, you know, Essex has what, close to three, three times our population? And so the fact that they have, you know, but in, in fact, their, their proportion of income controlled rental houses is lower than Williston. So just kind of keeping things proportional and keep it in rates rather than raw numbers, which are harder to compare. I guess I also wanted to kind of, back to what both Shep and Ellie have shared, which is, you know, when we talk about affordable housing, there, there is often a very sort of visceral reaction on the part of some, some proportion of the community who immediately assumes a certain set of stereotypes about who that is serving. And I think to the extent that we can try to break down those stereotypes and identify, not just real people as Ellie has done with herself, but also identify, you know, kind of examples. Examples of, you know, a, a single parent who's a teacher in the community. You know, what would their income be? What does WCS pay? You know, what does, you know, um, and how would that person? And, you know, their one or two children afford to live in Williston. So I think. You know, as we move forward with this and think about as a commission, communicating with the broader community. Uh, I think making sure that we have really strong examples of a diversity of folks who would benefit from. Uh, afforded, greater affordability, so that we can counteract a lot of those stereotypes. Thanks.
So I'll raise my hand because it's a very bad introduction. Oh, I'm Marla McQuiston, um. Jen Townley and Donna Savage, and we're here to kind of provide another example of what you just described, Megan. We're all part of a group of about over a hundred families in the state of Vermont who are. The Developmental Disabilities Housing Initiative. Mostly we are working on creating housing for our young adults. Children, not children, but, um, who are looking for. Places to live and we're all getting older. And so they've been living with us and. Once we're gone, the state only has sort of one alternative for where they can live. Most of our family members need direct service professionals, so they need service supported housing. Um, their needs range from transportation to work. Or help with cooking to things like help with feeding and going to the bathroom and medications and. A huge range. We're here because our families live in Williston and. Our kids went to these schools, they went to WCS, they went to CBU, their friends are. In the community, the community knows them well. They want to continue living here. Just for an example, during COVID, Justin was out riding his bike in the bike, on the bike path behind WCS. And he fell and was standing there with a bloody, blood dripping off. And a girl who was a few years behind him at CBU came over, asked him if she could call his parents. He didn't. Couldn't remember his phone number. Um, she called her mom, her mom got in the car, drove over to my house, knocked on the door. And sent me over and, uh, uh, Ally, Ollie stayed with him until I got there. You know, that's, that's the place we want him to stay here. If he goes to another community. And, and lives, you know, in Jericho. People don't know him, he's a stranger. So. I think Donna is going to speak next, Megan.
So I'm Donna Savage, um, and my sister Patrick is Patrick's daughter Shay and I have a son Jack. And we've been Williston residents for the past nineteen years. Um, our son Jack, uh, who will soon be celebrating his twenty second birthday, has significant and intensive lifelong disabilities. Which require twenty-four seven support and care. He's profoundly deaf with cochlear implant, has cortical visual impairment, uh, developmentally delayed. cognitively impaired, non-verbal, with limited other language skills. And in need of full on, full on personal support as he wears diapers. Despite Jack's disabilities, one thing that we know for sure is Jack knows his people and his places. In fact, consistency of people, places and routines crucial to his wellbeing. Um, as we, his parents are aging, it is no understatement to say we've been rather consumed with what his future living situation. Will look like once we are no longer able to care for him in our home. Um, as is the case with every parent, we want to see our child thrive, to live in a safe place, to have friends. Have friends and thrive. For Jack, we believe that can best happen for him in an environment that has a staff of skill. And dedicated support people, but also be inclusive of friends, people he has known throughout his life. Who would help keep him engaged and stimulated. A home for life that offers social engagement, community. Stability and supervised outings. That's our dream for him. In June, Jack will be aging out of his school years at CBU and transitioning into adult services. We recognize there currently exists a need for housing for folks in adult services right now. But please know there are more coming down the pipeline as their high school education also comes to an end. Thank you for your consideration for bringing residential communities to Vermont, specifically to Williston. That can provide vulnerable adults like Jack with a steady, permanent place to live and friends to live with long after. Their parents are gone.
All right, my name is Jen Townley and I'm a third year resident of Williston. And I have a twenty-five year old son with developmental disabilities who needs, uh, service support. And he too wants to live locally, because I think everyone knows, and not everybody, but. And his friends that he grew up with also would like to live here. Um, and I know Williston, often we talked a little bit about this, the less than eighty percent, um, is one of their categories. But adults with developmental disabilities are at the thirty percent of them. Which means given their limited social security benefits, um, they're probably lower income if they are able to work. Uh, they will have the access to such an housing, which you did very well, but it's going to be really critical for our, our kids, um, moving forward. And like Ellie said, we want to thank county staff. We see, I think you said BHFA, um, whoever was involved in this, um, needs assessment report. Uh, on housing and just say what a fine job that it is. And that we're both encouraged and we're thankful that the town is, uh, considering what changes might have to come ahead. To create housing actions for people that can't afford to live in Williston today, including people with developmental disabilities. And we look forward to continuing discussions, um, to bring stable, service supported. Um, affordable housing or, or for really any adults with developmental disabilities, not just our children, uh, to Williston. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for sharing those. That's really, really very powerful. Um. I was just thinking as you were speaking that it would be really helpful for me to. To be pointed towards some examples of how this is done well in other communities that you folks might be aware of. Would really welcome the chance to educate myself on that and, um, so that we can have a sense of. What the, what the goals would be as well as what are some possible tools that we can bring? In, um, trying to incorporate something along these lines.
Yeah, we can do that with.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for coming and for, and sharing your stories and. I'm sure many of us, but I just want to say I would like to, to find a way for. Our residents to stay here and that's important to me. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, and thank you also, and I do think we want in the report to emphasize, um. Places with services, um, as a category to be, uh, paid attention to. Um, and I wanted to also come back to the thing I said about Home Share Vermont. Um, for those empty bedrooms in some of these houses with three bedrooms and a one or two people living in them. I think we should programmatically, if, even if just through, um, educating our population about it, we should. Home Share Vermont is the organization I'm familiar with. They do a really good job of matching and I have multiple friends who have used them. And they also make you do a trial, um. And people who are in need often are the people who are willing to give up the privacy and have someone else in their home. But it's something that can work even if someone isn't in need, if they have an extra room, they often think of, oh, put it out for a roommate. But doing something kind of matching service like Home Share Vermont, I think provides a better result than just advertising for a roommate. And having a little bitter miss on how well it works. And so I would like us to programmatically. Just the way we say ADUs are a good thing to allow more of, or we should just say encouraging, um, and sharing is. A goal of our.
Yeah, we can put that into the recommendations that ADUs are specifically.
Yeah.
Really useful for, for that sort of arrangement.
Yeah. And that generally is affordable. Because people already are paying a hundred for the cost of their house. And so bringing someone in to help defray some of those costs, they're not trying to. Not a market rate situation.
And noting the synergy between people with developmental disabilities and their service supporters that they can live. Locally nearby for a place to live, um, as well as people who are aging and need home caretakers or need. People nearby that those staff can be in the community as well.
I think this, this is a good point to sort of. Um, acknowledge that the housing issue in Williston and this report. Covers a really broad range of challenges, gaps and potential solutions and. I know from a couple of iterations of Affordable Housing Task Forces in Williston that I've been around for. It's very easy to get mired in conversations where someone says, well, you're talking about this kind of housing, but I'm talking about that kind of housing. Or you're talking about a solution that works for this kind of housing, but I want to hear a solution that works for that kind of housing and. You know, the, the tough answer that I think we ran into in working in this, on this report is it's all of the above. You know, it's, it's where are your firefighters and teachers going to live and your, your town planners and your town manager and. All the other town staff that don't currently live in Williston in part due to affordability issues. And it's where do your service workers live and where do members of your community who don't or can't work live and. Everything in between. Um, and there will be policy solutions that work for one of those segments. That don't really do a whole lot for another. Um, and there will be. Parts of this, especially that very low income part, where we can do all the incentivizing in the world and we can, we can. Clear the way in zoning, but it's about creating an attractive landing place for those who will take advantage of, um. Federal programs and tax incentives. And it's about how do we attract the nonprofits that build this kind of stuff into a place like Williston? And make this a place for them, um, to say, you know, this is a place we can make a go of this kind of project. So. I, I, everybody comes, I think, to the housing conversation from, uh, I think everybody has a, a housing story. Um, even those of us who can't afford where we live have a housing story. Um, and. That we all sort of listen to each other's stories and, and recognize that there's a lot of diversity there. Um. And the answer is sort of do, do everything, um, as, as. Sort of efficiently and as soon as you can to tackle, you know, the jobs, homes gap of over thirty-five hundred homes. And the racial disparity and the need for supportive housing, um, and recognize that those things can, can all be happening and moving forward. To some degree, um, at the same time. And in fact, already are, albeit at a pace that most people would like to see accelerated. And. When you read this whole report, um, it's daunting, but it is optimistic in its conclusion. Um, the, the solutions are there. The town has reached a size where as a, as an organization. It's starting to have the capacity to do more challenging and complicated things. I mean, heck, you guys got through the tap corners, plum base code. You can do anything at this point. And I, that's a, that's a really cool story to be a part of as a, as a staff person and a planner and, um, you know. I would, I would encourage this group and anybody else who's thinking about what's ahead, not, not to get overwhelmed, um. To remember that there will be conversations about parts of, of the housing challenge that, um, aren't part of your own housing story. But might be part of your neighbors or your friends, um, and. Let's dive into it. Um, we're going to be talking about some policy stuff in the relative short term. Uh, even, even the sewer allocation memo that I've got, uh, for you to start reviewing tonight. Is a, is a little tiny piece of, of the housing conversation. We're also about to dive into a new town plan. Um, and we want to use the occasion of all of this refreshed information we have about housing. To do some, uh, informed citizen survey work and, and, and asking other folks in Williston for their housing stories. Uh, so that the housing goals and policies in that twenty twenty-five plan can be informed by this work. And public input, um, that's informed by this work as well. So. Short term, like what's coming up next on the agenda tonight. Medium term, what are some of the policy things we can look at, uh, right away? Slightly longer term, what's going to happen in the town plan? And then there's the stuff that has very little to do with zoning at all. And, and I just sort of generally refer to that. As the programmatic stuff where, um, we're really in a, in a new frontier. I mean, um. You know, Melinda's been handed this energy and community development job, partially with the assignment of, go figure out what this job is. And, um, you know, that's, that's where we are in Williston. That's, that's a positive story. So, um, you know, please, as, as you keep looking at this over the next week. Or two, dig into it. Um, I really appreciate the feedback from commission members on a couple of those minor things. We could definitely tweak that. Help illustrate those points better. Um. This needs assessment, we do want to bring to the select board in a more formal way, um, following town meeting and the election. Um, when we know what the select board is going to look like, um, but it's sort of the same conversation that we had tonight and saying. You know, if we take on policy changes, they're going to show back up at the select board. We want you to know that they're coming. We want you to, um, tell us if there's any that you. Don't want to see or want to see more of, uh, so that, so that we can work efficiently, um. And also, you, you know, much like when we went through the energy plan process. There are some things that may eventually show up as budget requests. So, you know, be, be ready for those programmatic things as well. And, you know, anybody experienced the energy plan knows. You know, it said create an energy plan with physician and then that, that, you know, took some time and some asking and some work to integrate it into a small town budget. Uh, but we got there. So, um. Thanks for the help with the refinements. We'll carry it forward to the select board. Uh, we'll, we'll make sure everybody knows when we take the word draft off the header. But it's not going to look a whole lot different than it does right now. And, um, you know, stay tuned for. Everything else we're going to be bringing you related to this topic.
Just, um, you mentioned something, Matt, that I thought was interesting, which is. I, I don't, and I don't know if this makes sense, but I, I wonder if we can, and it just need to be in the report and thank you. Want to reiterate the thank yous to everybody for the report, um, and the presentation tonight. But it sounds like maybe it would be good to hear from the organizations and, and the housers that. That do do the projects for low income about what maybe it is that we could do to be attractive or, or what are the things? That they look for when they're citing their projects, um. Uh, you know, because maybe those are pretty discreet and we don't necessarily need to. Do a huge, you know, change to attract a number of those in the nearish future. And I don't know how much of the funds are obligated already from V H C B, but I know they have a lot of money right now. And, and you know, what can we do to, to attract some of those projects?
Megan, can I jump in?
Yes, absolutely. Go ahead. I couldn't see your hand.
Two things, um, one is to, uh, Sheila's point, I feel like we should move ahead with the. Um, Affordable Housing Advisory Board. To go with our Affordable Housing Fund to exa- answer exactly that kind of question to start those conversations. So it's not Melinda alone. Having conversations with the institutions that support these programs. But that there's a citizen body, um, supporting this effort. So I'd, I'd like to recommend that we, that we. Do what steps we have to take to get a advisory board in place. And then the second is, um, in regards to what you said, Matt, I don't want us to work on how this goes in the town plan for twenty twenty-five. And then work on zoning after that. And, uh, when you presented this a few weeks ago, Jeff Ferris said, wasn't this too late? Isn't this a, something that should have happened twenty years ago with all the housing? We already know that there's already hundreds of houses in the pipeline and that things are scheduled way out because of our growth management. And so I feel as though.
And so I feel as though I, we are behind the eight ball on the zoning part of it. And I would really like to have. To say that I would like Melinda to be coming back to us with the, the language that's in South Burlington's and Burlington's and other. Local area for uh. Inclusionary zoning regulations so that we are saying, oh, that would work here, that wouldn't work here. I would like us actually to be working on the language for that piece of it. As we, everything else programmatically you can implement and it might happen the next year. But the zoning is going to take years to take effect because people already have approval of projects. And I, I just feel like we need to get that in the pipeline faster rather than slower.
And, and I do think we had that feedback very clearly from our Taff Corners. Project, like I don't. I don't think that's just the will of a couple of people on this planning commission. I feel like we have had that input. Not that we shouldn't continue to gather more, but I don't want the gathering of input to slow that down. I agree with you, Chip, and I think that that's. We heard that loud and clear and I, I agree.
Right, so um, if we could. Maybe. Next meeting or the meeting after, think about looking at a timeline for these kinds of. Uh, next steps, um. Let's see what we can try to get moving as quickly as possible. I totally agree. And um. Obviously, we have select board elections and other kinds of town budget issues and so forth coming up in March, but. That shouldn't mean that we can't. Be working on these, these issues, um. And, you know, identifying some priorities. Um, this has been so. Very, very helpful, uh, thinking through these recommendations. Um, has been terrific. Uh, and so. You know, I think. Let's dive in like this, this is our time to do it and um, and, and our time to, to get to work on it.
One question on that, would it be helpful if the report identified some of the like highest priority things or is that something that you as a land manager staff want to sort of? Battle, um, that helping the framing to the select board or any, you know, having somebody documented?
Yeah, I mean, the staff may have their answer to this, but um. I, you know, it, it seems like there among your recommendations, John, there must be. Uh. Certain set of them that would be fairly quick and kind of, you know. I'm so tired of this phrase, but I don't know another one, which is of course like the low hanging fruit, right? So. Let's, you know, can we identify things that would be fairly quick and. Would not necessarily involve a laborious. Process. Um. Or that if it does involve a laborious deliberative process and, and lots of change. Um, in, you know, in. A series of documents and we have to go through public hearings and so forth. Um, let's get it started soon. Um, so I, I think it's not so much a priority list as a. You know, here's some more immediate term, short term, long term kinds of things, um. And. That's exactly right of, of what we could accomplish fairly quickly. And um, and then the things that are longer. Either because of their nature or because of the process that we need to go through to implement them.
Yeah, you know, we, we really. Stand ready to, to bring especially zoning bylaw changes back to the commission very quickly. Um, from our internal conversation staff and working on this report, we. We generally know what those policy changes are going to be, um, and, and writing the text is not the complicated part. Um, it will, it will be. The, the degree to which some of them are more or less controversial. So. I can, I can tell you mechanically and in a text way exactly what we, we would bring you. Um, and we could bring it to you very quickly as fast as more than I can write it. Um, the question is, um. Does build lots more houses in Williston and include more affordable houses in that mix? Play well overall in the town. Um. And, and with, with you and with the select board.
Well, I think it, I think if I can just respond to that, that, that it has to. Of course, it has to be messaged really carefully and, and everything that, that you yourself just said, Matt, about. Um, you know, that we need to include these really. You know. Many, many different approaches, right?
Yeah.
That it's the home share and it's the um, accessory dwelling units and it's um. You know, missing middle approaches and it's uh, loosening some. Of the growth management. Practices, um, or. Maybe we need to be thinking through this state designation program about neigh- neighborhood development area like. That, you know, make it, makes the uh, makes the message about. Here are the many, many ways that we're tackling the issue of affordable housing rather than, hey, we're going to build lots more houses, right? Because. That, you know, building more houses, for one thing, it's going to happen one way or another. So. Let's package it as part of a. Bigger process. And as very intentionally trying to address these fundamental problems that affect, um, you know. People across the board in Williston. And that will. Allow us to kind of make fairly rapid progress in this.
And, and to me, the priority isn't the number of houses. I know the first slide showed that our, our housing to labor ratio was bad. But if we built more houses that are in the subdivision selling for five or six hundred thousand dollars, it's not going to solve the problem that the people who work in Williston can't. Own a house in Williston. So I feel like we really did focus on the affordability part of it, not the number of houses. And um, how, how can we get some percentage of the retail workers in, in Williston to be able to live in Williston? So I, I think we want to focus there and not on the number of houses.
Yeah, I would say, um, I'm a little hesitant to, to specify so, um. Uh, minutely on like retail workers. Um, I think that we need to. Really identify that. Uh, you know, that the service, the, especially the low end of the service sector has a lot of different components to it, many of which are actually. Uh, as, as was mentioned, the support services for, for instance, Justin and. And the other, you know, uh, our other citizens who were represented by their families today. Um, so. So I'm a little hesitant on the, the kind of retail worker thing, partly. Because there's more than that. But also because in a very practical sense, uh. Retail jobs are, as we know, fairly low paid. They, they tend not to be something that is stable enough. For people to warrant moving for. Um, so while I would like to have housing available that was. Affordable for people working retail jobs, we have to realistically understand that. Um. What we need is stuff that they can afford, not necessarily. Um, to have retail workers. Living in Williston because that's a goal in and of itself. So I just want to make sure, I don't think you were saying that, Chip, but I just want to make sure that those are. That that doesn't get sort of muddled.
It's a good point that the, what I was trying to say is one of the slides that there eighteen hundred. Retail workers in Williston and uh, the average. Annual wage is thirty five thousand or something or.
Thirty seven.
Okay, so um, I'm using that as an example. And I would like people who are earning that amount of money to be able to live in Williston. And we have a clear example of a population of those people, but I didn't mean to say it that to give those particular people.
Yeah.
Priority, anybody who's in that kind of. Um, situation, we don't want to be an exclusive community.
Thanks, yeah. Sorry if I misunderstood you.
No, you didn't. It was good to point that out.
Okay, we are kind of uh, almost out of time. Can we have a quick look at attachment A?
Sure, um. I don't know, Melinda, if you can.
I'll hopefully approve it and send it to the select board.
Cause we look at it every year, so it's well, one year update. So I want to, I want to just talk about. A couple of quick updates to this and mission will have another time to look at this in, in its next one or two meetings before we send it on to the select board.
Um, okay.
This will, this will be one of the things we throw right at that brand new select board on the first night. Um, so you know, really briefly, this is essentially the wastewater treatment budget. Williston decides every year how much additional sewer capacity to make available for sale to new users um, and developments that require it. Couple of things that I just want to highlight for this year, um. One is since the last time uh, we, we wrote an attachment A. Williston has entered into uh, an agreement to purchase fifty thousand additional gallons of sewer capacity. Uh, we're doing it the same way we've done the last few ten thousand gallons per year. We actually made the first purchase during this current fiscal year FY twenty three. So. This is the attachment A for FY twenty four. Um, and we're, we're in that second year. So, Melinda, if you go down just a tiny bit more, there's the purchase schedule in the table. So. So we're headed in the direction of owning a total of uh, one million, one hundred and thirty thousand gallons per day at the Essex Junction plant. Um, this certainly helps uh, in terms of our, you know, sort of long range capacity issues. Uh, we, we have an ongoing concern about having enough capacity for Williston to achieve its goals, uh, and certainly. It is something you need to have and support uh, the production of new homes uh, to meet housing goals. So, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna blitz through a little more of that if you just get to the line graphs, um. So, you know, we do keep an eye on average daily flow. I, I've tried to see if there's any uh, rough correlation to. Rainfall, uh, but the story, you know, is really the same one we've been telling for a long time, since the beginning of sewer uh, service in Williston. Things went up and up and up from nineteen eighty five until two thousand and six, and then they, they kind of leveled off. Um, we've had slight increases in the amount of total wastewater flow coming out of Williston, but. Not a lot, and certainly if you think about everything new that's been built in Williston since two thousand and six, um. The, the flattening of that upper graph is, is really pretty, pretty surprising, um. We've thrown a couple of different theories around on that. Uh, we've gotten better at, at fixing pipes over the years, dealing with infiltration and leakage, et cetera. People are using less water, household sizes are getting smaller, et cetera. Um, but the, the big takeaway I want folks to think about is. We talk in this um, attachment A a lot about. How much sewer we're going to sell. And how much we have available to sell and how long can we keep selling it this way? And I've done it that way for all of the five or six years that this has been my job to prepare this report and it. It misses a critical thing, which is. That the gallons per day capacity we sell. Don't all show up. In terms of what flows into the plant at Essex Junction. Most users don't use all the gallons per day that we sell them. And, and roughly speaking, uh, if I look at the history of ten years of capacity sale, the ten most recent years. Versus what has shown up at the meter at the end of that ten year period. Users use about sixty percent of the gallons per day that we sell. So every year we look at it and we say. If we keep going the way we've been going with the gallons we've been selling, we've got, you know, twenty five, twenty six, twenty eight years worth of capacity and it, and it misses that sixty percent factor.
Yes.
It's only a twenty eight year or a twenty five year capacity limit if everybody that we sell to from now forward uses every single gallon we sell them forever. So a little bit of the messaging in this year's attachment A based on that and, and some of, some of what I've been asked to think about by the select board in past years is. Worry about sewer capacity, but don't worry about it. Quite so much. We have some time, we have a little more flexibility. Um, and that I, I just want to lead into the biggest change in the recommendations that I'm making this year, uh, if the planning commission supports them and. Um, Melinda, if you can go down toward um, where we talked about the recommendations. And there's going to be a little table about new residential. Uh, keep going. It's after these full page history tables. Okay, right there. Whoop. There, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, possible residential allocation. Um, this is a category we usually put between ten and twelve thousand gallons per day and two. Um, last year. We put about that in. And nobody bought any new residential sewer capacity. Um, despite the fact that we have a number of approved subdivisions amounting to. Probably over four hundred dwelling units total that have received growth management allocation. That have not yet purchased any of the capacity they need to build their projects. So. I'm sensing a pending log jam. Um, and these are projects that have been through the town's development review process. They've been through growth management. They're scheduled to be built. Um, it does not make sense to me. To limit the capacity that's available for sale, uh, when we know what's coming. Uh, and when our, when our land use control system has said. This is something that's acceptable to the town. It's been approved through zoning. So. I'm recommending significantly upping the residential allocation to support. The kind of purchases that I think are going to show up this year. Um, rather than make this the limiting factor and, um, you know. We talked a little bit about this tonight with our affordability conversation. Uh, we talked about how, you know. People who build projects, Darren mentioned this, have to go to a bank and get financing. And the thing that banks hate is uncertainty. And um, the two. Huge amounts of uncertainty that Williston has integrated in its system that doesn't necessarily exist in some of our neighboring communities are our growth management system. And our extreme limitations on the amount of sewer capacity that we make available for sale. Um, and again, this is about selling capacity to projects that have cleared all of our zoning standards. They are approvable under. Some pretty stringent um, development standards. So. This is different. I view it as uh, a very, very quick housing supportive measure that also is a very practical thing. That the town can do, just knowing that we've got some larger developments coming in that could use a little bit of certainty. By the way, the sooner that those developers purchase this capacity from the town, the sooner they start paying us to hold it. Because that's what they have to do. Uh, but in the time between when they purchase it and reserve it from us and the time they put it to use, they pay us a holding fee. So, uh, there's also a financial aspect to this for the town. So. That's my biggest recommendation. If you go a little further down, I think I paralleled it a little bit with the affordable allocation. This used to be around five thousand G P D. I opted to seventy two fifty. Um, we do have some projects uh, that have integrated some affordable units as part of their growth management. Criteria uh, that would have the ability to purchase some of their units out of this category. And again, wanting to make sure that that's supported. So. Those are the, the big changes are we're buying more capacity. My calculations say don't worry about capacity quite as much as I've been encouraging you to these last five years. And I do recommend supporting um, permitted existing housing projects by making more capacity available for purchase this year. That's as fast as I can do attachment A. That's.
That's great. Yeah, Shayla, go ahead.
Okay, Matt, I'm just going to say it back to you. Tell me if it's right. So this is. Approved projects. We have the capacity. We are going to make the capacity available. Faster to them than we would otherwise, or that we, than we have recommended in the past.
Yes. So if you look at, um, if you look at that historic allocation. This is how much the select board has historically made available for sale. Um, so where we have projects that could easily buy all thirty thousand gallons per day on proposing to make available for purchase. That's a category we typically put either seventy five hundred or ten thousand gallons per day and, and. You know, so if that were the case and, you know, uh, one purchaser were to buy all of that, and we don't have any holdback provisions that prevent any one project from just. Coming in on July one and buying it. The answer for everybody else for the next three hundred and sixty four days is sorry, no, we're all done. Uh.
Yeah, okay.
So, yes, you, you got it right when you said it back to me. So, yes, you, you got it right when you said it back to me. The, the other way I think of it is we are not trying to do, uh, growth management through sewage allocation. Right, and, and, and.
Right, that's what it feels like, it feels like another layer of growth management to me, which is not the intent.
Yeah, and you know, one thing that we'll try to bring to you, and it does reach beyond zoning a little bit, but it is especially about housing. Is the way the town system has evolved, it is a little bit circular between growth management and sewer allocation right now. And my recommendation is to really keep what you're doing to manage growth in your zoning. And then adjust your sewer to, um. To, to meet that and then where you do start to say, well, we might need to do something different in zoning is. If in your town plan, you start to recognize you've got a capacity issue, that over the life of that plan is going to be a problem. Start to talk about, well, you know, what are we going to do when we do hit that limit? But I would say, you know, in, in my old, without that sixty percent factor, we were talking a twenty forty two horizon on existing sewer capacity. That might have even been before I talked about the purchase of the additional fifty thousand gallons, so. Uh. S- secret announcement, we're branding the next town plan effort, Williston twenty fifty, because that's the ultimate horizon of a very long range plan. You've got sewer capacity to twenty fifty. You, you've got it across any foreseeable horizon that your next town plan, um, is going to address. But you're still going to want to say some stuff about continuing to work on it. So, thinking about what we're going to sell during FY twenty four, I think it's reasonable to be able to support the permitted development, um, this year.
And I, I'm totally with you and I, I felt like we've been too cautious in the past. But I, um, want to ask two things, one is, did you looked at rainfall? As compared to usage to see if it had to do with infiltration and so forth. Um, did you look at brewery approvals and hotel approvals or implementations? I would think those would be two things that would affect it more than typical residential development.
So, a new hotel is about like building a year's worth of residential development, um. And we did have one come online, I, I'd have to look for the year, but I didn't see a big bump in it, but it was also right before COVID.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, it's ten thousand gallons per day for that new hotel. In roughly six to seven hundred thousand gallons per day that show up at the meter down in Essex Junction. So, um, you know, we're still looking at, there's been two years. In which the total, uh, average daily flow exceeded seven hundred thousand gallons per day. One of those two years was two thousand and six.
Yeah.
Uh, which is just wild, um, and the other one was, I think, two thousand and sixteen or something.
We, we had a, a leak.
And two thousand and sixteen was literally somebody's water main leaking into their basement and they're some, um, pumping it out into the town sewer for. Like eight months until we finally figured out where it was.
Um, so on brewery.
So, uh, breweries and high strength waste are another issue and, um, the way I typically address this in attachment A is to say. Given limited capacity, another thing to consider is high strength waste and, and users like that because. You know, you do want to support some job growth with your sewer allocation, but there are jobs that generate lots of wastewater and there are jobs that generate almost none. Um, within our sewer use ordinance, we also do have heightened standards for those, uh, users that produce high strength waste. Including being able to require a pre-treatment.
Great.
And it was my follow up. Yeah, and I think the, the, the takeaway is, there's a, there's a total gallons per day flow capacity at the plant and there's how much of that Williston has. There's also a biological oxygen demand limit. And then so that nutrient limit is one that if you took on a lot of high strength users, even though they're not producing a lot of gallons. You could actually hit that limit sooner, uh, luckily that has very little to do with. You know, most light industrial or any residential or service type uses that we connect, so. We are also paying attention to high strength waste, there's been some stuff in the news and the select board on that reason.
And we can and do required pre-treatment.
Yes, great, yes, and we've been, we've been moving towards that, uh, very recently with one of our breweries.
Okay, um. I would like to just. Propose that, you know, we, we look on this favorably, uh. The, you know, especially considering that one of the recommendations that we heard tonight was. Indeed related to sewer capacity, so here we are, we're already making inroads into our affordable housing. Recommendation list, um. And, uh, let me just take a quick temperature check, uh. Folks on the planning commission, do you, would, would you like more time to digest this? Sorry for the digestion joke, um, so would you like more time to read this or would you like to vote on it right now?
I move, we accept it.
A second. Okay, I guess we're voting, all right, um, all in favor of accepting the, the, uh, attachment A as written?
Bye.
Okay, you got your unanimous. Pass there, Matt? Oh, and, um, yeah, I think this is great because it's, uh, and I take Shayla's comments to heart too that. You know, I, as you, as you point out, let's, let's do zoning by zoning, not with sewer allocation.
Okay. Motion, so it says twenty four.
Okay, are we, um. Let's see.
Oh, yeah, that's just a super quick FYI, um, so.
Okay.
Carter, who was in the meeting earlier, um, she was interviewed this evening, I guess we'll find out soon if she's been appointed to the development review board. Um, she's on the Glazer Committee as the representative at large. And we as staff do not think that this will impact her participation on either the committee or DRB. We're not recommending any action at this time, it's just merely an FYI for you guys.
Thank you.
Great, okay, thank you. All right, motion to adjourn? I'll move that, yeah, thank you, Shayla, okay, um, bye everyone, thank you very much for productive meeting. And, uh, stay healthy out there, it's all kinds of nasty bugs, oh my gosh, UVM, everybody's sick. Thanks for coming.
For being here, everybody.